Good evening, everybody. We have a quorum, and so I'm going to call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome, everyone, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. So, we're going to entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting on February 12th. Motion made by Mark, seconded by Katina. Is there any conversation, discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Paula? Paula's online, Lauren, just so you know. Okay. Thank you. Motion passed. I'll entertain a motion to adopt the Budget Workshop Number One Minutes from February 19th.
So moved.
Motion made by Paula, seconded by Ilda, who has joined us online.
Hello, everybody.
So, any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. Okay, I oppose. No abstention. Mary's abstaining. Okay. So now we're up to public comment. Is there anybody here who has signed up for public comment? Anybody online who is, wants to speak during public comment? Okay. So we'll keep moving along. I want to thank the Board and the Central Office staff and everybody else in the Wyndham Public Schools for putting together the budget that we supported last, we voted to support and move forward to the Town Board of Finance. It's due this weekend to the Board of Finance. I just wanted to share with Board members a couple of important things about that process. As you know, the Town Charter requires that we send the budget off to the Board of Finance by the 15th of the month. I spoke with the Chair of the Board of Finance, Tyler Griffin, and if people don't pick it up at Town Hall beforehand, the Board of Finance members will get the books put in their hands at the Board of Finance meeting on the 19th of March, and when they meet at Town Hall that evening. A couple of us plan on being there, not to answer questions or discuss our budget, but we also are there now that there's resolution to the special education funding that was passed by the Legislature this past week and signed by the Governor this week. They do plan, the Board of Finance, on taking action on helping us deal with the shortfall that we have in our budget because of a decreased federal, I mean state, support that we heard about mid-year. So, that's happening on Wednesday evening. The date that we are set to present our budget to the Board of Finance is Wednesday, April 2nd. And Mark and I will be talking with Central's, Central Office staff and Neil in particular about how we're going to present the budget, sort of feeding off of what we talked about last week at our board meeting. So, I encourage Board members to be there on April 2nd, if you're, if it's at all possible. I think it's important that we're sitting there in support of our budget, and you could speak if you want during, during public comment. And other members of the public could speak then, too. There will be a hearing on it at some point, but Tyler told me that he hasn't set the date for that. But we'll let you all know about that, at which point we'll be encouraging folks, parents, staff from Wyndham Public Schools and members of the public to go and speak in support of our budget. Okay, any questions on that? I did forget one thing. I wanted to ask us for a moment of silence. I don't know whether you all heard in the news or read in the paper that John Adamo passed away. And he was a teacher and active in Wyndham Public Schools for over 50 years and was beloved by many folks. And then afterwards, he went on to serve on the Board of Ed for a period of time. He was a great public servant and a great booster for Wyndham Public Schools. So I think we should stand and, if you can, as you are able, and have a moment of silence for John Adamo. Thank you.
Yes, Mark?
I could just add one side note. Because of John's long relationship, Wyndham Dollars for Scholars is creating a scholarship in his name. And we're accepting donations if you want to give to the scholarship for John, but we will be accepting a scholarship in John's, or we are creating a scholarship in John Adamo's name.
That's a wonderful tribute. Thank you for sharing that. So that's it. I'm going to hand it over to Neil for the Acting Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So we have a variety of things happening, or have been happening, in the district I will talk about this evening. The first is connected, actually, to something that the Board Chair just mentioned. On February 19th, or excuse me, February 13th, the Director of Pupil Services, Erin Coleman, attended a special education listening tour that was held at the Legislative Office Building in Hartford. It was held by several state senators and state representatives, including our own Susan Johnson. And it was attended by many people, including superintendents and administrators from all over the state. One of the things that came up was actually the dwindling excess cost reimbursement that has now decreased significantly, which in turn has caused the recent legislature to be passed in us receiving that aforementioned $144,000, $144,837. So anyways, also, Mr. Coleman has shared concerns specifically to our district about also the meeting the needs of our students and that we receive many students during the year that sometimes we don't budget for, and it is our job and duty and legal obligation to meet the needs of all of those students. So I really appreciated that he was there representing our district during this important listening session. So thank you, Erin. The second thing I have is the Eastern Connecticut State University Art Gallery visit. So as part of the African-American and Latino and Puerto Rican Studies class at Wyndham High School, the class, along with Michael Hope and Nicole Nagel, who are instructors, along with Assistant Principal Pat Rizley, they started that whole semester by studying the history of Latin American countries and migration to the United States. They had a trip over at Eastern's Art Gallery. I think that's just an awesome way to kick off a class like that. So it was a very successful, and just, I wanted to mention that picture. Art seems to be a little bit of a theme of my superintendent's update, and just the image just kind of says it all. They look really happy to be there, and I thought it was a great kickoff to a class. And utilizing a valuable resource across the street.
I happened to be there. In fact, I think I took that picture probably, but it was amazing. The students were really interested in reading all the literature and asking questions. So kudos to the professors and the students who attended.
Thank you. And keeping on the art theme, my next update is the Sweeney School Art Exhibit that brightened up the Willimantic Public Library. There's an image there of some of the students with Ms. Walker, who is the art teacher at Sweeney. So they held an exhibit. It was, all that artwork is from our awesome students, art projects from kindergarten to fifth grade. And then they basically were incorporating what they had been learning in class. And basically, the Principal of Sweeney, Ms. Firth, presented and just taught, gave a little presentation and a little introduction. So again, like you could see from elementary to high school, whether it's history-related or part of the art curriculum, I just love all the art exhibits taking place in the district. So kudos to Sweeney. And then just, I wanted to quickly mention, this is, you know, about a month ago, Barrow STEM Academy had hosted just an engaging, informative STEM information night, attracting prospective families eager to learn about the K-8 lottery process and just really speak about the benefits of a STEM education. It was well-attended, and they had teachers that volunteered their time to just really speak about what, all the things that go on at the building. So I thought that was awesome that they did that, and just wanted to take a quick moment to acknowledge that occurred. And then, coming up, at North Wyndham Elementary School, we're going to have a grand opening for our school-based health center. This will be, it's a joint effort of the Wyndham Board of Education and Wyndham Hospital. And currently, we have locations already at the high school, the middle school, and Charles H. Barrow STEM Academy, now at North Wyndham Elementary School and Wyndham Early Childhood Center, Wyndham Head Start that's at this campus as well as the high school. This program is available to all students in these schools. In addition, access for our school nurses. Students at Natrog, Sweeney, Wyndham Center, and Phoenix Academy are eligible to use these services at the North Wyndham site for physicals and immunizations, if, you know, with appointments. So I love that we're giving, even though they're not at every school, we have access for our district to take advantage of these services. So there will be a big grand opening on Thursday, March 27th at 5:00 PM. We'll have a few small welcome speeches and some light refreshments, as well as a tour of the two offices, and hopefully a peek at the greenhouse, depending on the weather, it looks like we'll be in good shape to do that, I hope, which was built with the grant fund. So, so we will, you're obviously all invited, and if you can make it, that will be great, and I look forward to seeing you there. All right, next. All right. This will be a big update, because we do a lot in sports here. Just the winter sports are wrapping up and are close to wrapping up. I just wanted to give some acknowledgement to all of our sports. Our indoor track team competed in the Class M Championships. And we had Angelia Christie finished seventh in the 55-meter dash, and Cassidy O'Connor finishing fifth in the high jump. Angelia actually set a new school record in the prelims of the 55-meter dash, so way to go. So that was our indoor track update. Wrestling, everyone knows we have a very prominent wrestling program. We finished third at the ECC Championships with Troy Torres-Mori taking first in his weight class. And then the wrestling team finished fourth at the Class S meet. Five of the wrestlers qualified for the state opens that particular weekend. And I actually think if, because things occurred after this update, I actually think two of our female wrestlers actually medaled in place. I think it was second, both second, but they had high finishes at the event. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Boys' basketball, the state tournament has happened. The boys won their first game and then fell in the second contest, but kudos to them. And I mentioned this earlier, but Malcolm Hunter was, well, I didn't mention this, but Malcolm Hunter was selected to the ECC All-Conference Team, and Andy Gonzalez for being selected to the Honorable Mention Team. So kudos to our boys' basketball team. And then, last but definitely not least, our girls' basketball. I think like three of these bullets have been changed since, like, since this was put out, because we're fast and furious here. We, the, our girls' team was the ECC Tournament Champions for the second year in a row. They played at Mohegan Sun a couple weeks ago. That was fantastic. Coach Robert Mongwell, he was named the Domino's ECC Coach of the Year, so yay to him. And Anaya Jenkins was the Domino's ECC Athlete of the Year, also way to go. Anaya and Angelies were also named the ECC All-Conference Team, while Zoe Robbins and Asia Harris earned honorable mention honors. And then it starts to mention the open state playoffs. A lot has happened since then. Actually, our girls' team will be vying for the state championship Saturday, 10:00 AM, at Mohegan Sun. So if you are around and want to see a great team play some great basketball, please make it down there. I will be there, hopefully not losing my voice like I did Monday night, but I, no promises. All right, thank you.
Very exciting.
Yeah, there's a lot. Sorry, but I wanted to make sure everyone was aware of all that really great stuff. And then one really cool thing that happened at Natrog. They had a visit from the science squad, one of their science squad ex-block activities is a culmination of some of the things they were doing. They were visited by Scott Gagliardi from WFSB Channel 3, who came in a storm tracker vehicle. They were able to ask the weatherman Scott questions, and they had a close encounter with the storm tracker vehicle. Actually, later that evening, I believe they've made the news. They were all very excited, so way to go. You can see how happy they are and what a cool experience for all of them. I believe Mr. Harris was able to pop by and see that take place.
The kids must have really loved that.
Yeah, they, yeah, I heard it was fantastic. And then, finally, for my report, I just wanted to mention a nice recognition. Wyndham High School English Teacher Dar Boling was recently informed that the high school's literary magazine, Mirrors and Windows, Unity, has been selected to receive the rank of Realm First Class in the 2024 NCT Recognizing Excellence in Art and Literacy magazines, the Realm Program. And it's just really awesome that they achieved that recognition. So I wanted to make everybody aware of that. As you know, that magazine, you know, every year, I believe Dar usually shows up and gives copies to the Board, so I just wanted to make sure people are aware. So in the past month, a lot of great things have been happening in the district, and I wanted to make everybody aware.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or comments for Neil? When are we having a parade? When the weather's warmer. It's getting there. So, okay, if there are no questions or comments, we'll move on to committee reports. And we, first up is Personnel. Paula?
Yes, Personnel met on February 24th, no, let me get that right, January 27th. We did not have a meeting in December, and we actually canceled the meeting in February as it was so close to Grace's departure. We thought it would be a little difficult, just a few days later, to have a meeting. So we will be meeting in March. We want to welcome Kimberly Beck, who will be the interim, who is, I'm sorry, the interim Director of HR. So we look forward to sitting down and having a talk about what we want to see down the road in our personnel meetings. But for the 127 meeting, Mr. Doyle, Dr. Cabana Owen, Grace, and Neil were there, and the minutes were approved by Katina. Grace did give us an update on HR activities, which included the fundraising at Central Office for Children's Hospital in Hartford, the continued partnership to strengthen the student connections relations with UConn, many, many registrations, or I should say registrations for many career fairs, and a very nice farewell gathering for Dr. Young Burke. The vacancy report, I don't have with me, but there, that slide can be emailed to everyone if you haven't already seen it. And we did make a decision by the committee to have a biannual report on our visiting teachers program, so we can get a continued update on who's here and how long they're staying and the continued success of that program. As I said, we're, lots of recruiting fairs and recruiting initiatives are coming up down the pike. And the paraprofessionals that required recertification were getting their professional development that would help prepare them for taking the recertification test. At the time, regarding our superintendent search, our consultant was holding the focus group meetings. Obviously, we've come a little bit farther down the road there. And regarding contract negotiations, custodians and maintenance contracts are the next ones coming up. And I believe we have just started the maintenance with, with just going over, whatever that's called, rules and regulations, for lack of a better term at the moment. And the meeting was adjourned at 6:32. So we will be meeting again in March, the last Monday of the month.
Thank you, Paula. Is there anybody who has any questions for Paula or comments? Who's on the committee, people who are on the committee? Nothing? Okay, we appreciate the report. Now we're on to the Ad hoc Elementary School Construction Committee Report. Mark?
Thank you. Well, for those of you who were driven by, you see the building's almost done. Sorry, wrong minutes. We did meet on the, on the 4th. We started off by reviewing the community forums. We've had several in-person, including the teachers and parents and community members. And then we did the online community forum, which was about one of our better-attended ones. We had almost 36 participants online. From those forums, we went on to discuss the possibility of doing more. The decision was made not to try and schedule those now, because we wanted to make sure we didn't interfere with the budget forums. So we have to sort of blend the two together and make sure we don't get too confused. So we will have more forums, probably, again, virtual, since it seemed to be well-attended, in order to continue to get the word out to the public. We had an update on the land testing, and three of the tests have been concluded and the reports are in, and a result of what they call the Phase 1, which has to do, I guess, with the quality of the dirt or the land, and whether there was any buried tanks or anything in there. So we went on to, we're going to go, we approved going on to a Phase 2, which is a little deeper dive. We had to wait till after the frost. So they'll do a Phase 2 now, testing, and that will conclude it, conclude that. The, our consultants and the town have a copy of the results. There's no major surprise, there's nothing that we wouldn't normally expect. So we seem to be in good shape there. We did, we also discussed a preliminary timeline for doing some site planning, because it's, we're getting into that phase where we need to start developing costs and especially the vision of what the building would be like, so we can, we've talked about the concept, we've talked about why, now we need to show the town or the citizens what it might look like or what we're actually going to talk about. So that's, that's coming up. We've, there, we reviewed the ed specs, and I believe they'll be coming up to the Board for approval, the revised ed specs, am I right? Okay, thank you. I always like citizens' participation. Thank you, Neil. So we'll, we'll have the revised ed specs. It'll be more up-to-date in terms of the populations and some corrections. That'll be coming to the Board for approval. And that was, we also discussed having more intervention, having meetings with the town, town fathers, so that we can bring them up to date and talk about referendums with the land purchase and moving forward for the school, trying to make the deadline of June 30th for the state grant application. And that was essentially what we did. Yes?
I just want to add that after that meeting, we did get some more information from the consultants about what kinds of things needed to be done by the Town Council, resolutions that they needed to pass in order for there to be, if we wanted, if we were planning on submitting a grant, I mean, a proposal to the state by June 30th deadline, what kinds of things need to happen. I went with those notes and met with the Town Manager last week and walked him through what we need and have gotten a commitment from him that he will bring those resolutions to the Town Council in a timely manner, probably after we get through the budget referendum, but in plenty of time for the submission of the grant. We just have to have action from the Town Council on a few things. And Mark and I will keep you posted on a discussion with the town leaders about the timing on everything after that. Any questions? Okay. Now we're on to curriculum. Mary?
Yes, we met on March 4th, and members of the committee were there, except, I think, Ilda and also Neil, the principals of the high school and the middle school, Pam Kavanaugh and Carlos de la Barera, and interim Assistant Superintendent Beth Brunet. We discussed the middle school to high school transition and got some information about the opportunities that middle school students have to explore the pathways and future careers. Although we did emphasize that Wyndham High School is a comprehensive high school. The pathways are focus areas. It's, they're not really tracks, like academic tracks or anything, because the students get a general educational curriculum. The eighth graders visit the high school, they talk to counselors, they attend career fairs. Some of these things have already happened. They learn about the academics and the clubs. And two areas of interest that kind of transition from the middle school to the high school are music and world languages. And there's a lot of collaboration between the teachers in those areas and also getting the students connected through joint activities. And there's also an honors program, I think, one in the middle school that moves up to the high school. I meant to ask for confirmation, but I do think that the middle school students are given a lot of encouragement to excel academically, so they can be in the honors classes. And they get information about high school classes and academics in their weekly advisory, all the students do. That's one of the topics they get. Some suggestions for continued engagement. Katina suggested peer counseling from high school students to middle school students, and also providing more information and about Eastern Connecticut State University, how close it is to the high school. And there was a little bit of discussion about offering additional languages at the high school. But there's always a problem of staffing and the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anybody who has any questions or comments on that report? Okay. Policy. Katina?
Yes, we met Monday, March 10th, and in attendance was Brandon Adlin, as well as Neil and Beth. We started at 5:33, and the staff was very well-prepared in discussing the legislative updates by the State of Connecticut, some of our already-approved policies, which are, some of them are minor language changes in the definitions. Others are more specific, but among them, the budget procedures and line item procedures in Series 3000, which requires an added 2% set-aside clause that articulates about having budget procedures in case of shortage, social media and in terms of crowdfunding, and that make very clear that the money goes- clear that the money goes to the Board of Education, not to the individual who brings it or collects it. Then in the Series 5000, there are minor language changes on attendance, truancy and chronic absenteeism, homeless, series of homeless children and youth series and the series to improve completion of FAFSA, which is an obligation for college and grants. So also, we are going to meet, oh, sorry, there were quite a few others that need to be still reviewed with human resources, for example, and other leaders of the administration. So those will be coming to our next meeting on the 20th, on April 3rd, I think it is, 7th, next month for us to review, including an addition to, not addition, but a replacement to our policy regarding non-resident students of Wyndham school staff members. So we have a lot of, they have a lot of work, we have a lot of work to look. But of those who have been updated, you will have a first reading for final approval on our Board of Meeting of March 26th. Thank you. Any, anything else to add about the members that went to the meeting?
Are there any questions either? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you to the committee and the staff, all these committees and the staff that support them. A lot of work going on. And then now we're on to school planning and design. Brendan.
So we were scheduled to meet this week, but the meeting was canceled. So nothing to report at this time.
Nothing new to report, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any questions for Brendan? Nope? What did you do instead? Did the canceled meeting dance? Okay, so now we're on to discussion items and we have two discussion items on the agenda today. One is the proposal to establish the annual Dolores Hammond Memorial Scholarship and the other is on continuing discussion on the state health partnership plan. And we have some information to share with folks on that. So who's taking on item A? Neil?
Okay. Here we go. Just, I'm going to just talk to a letter that was submitted to us by Pamela Kavanaugh, the Wyndham High School principal. And it was basically just to let us know that there was a formal request made by James F. Curtis to establish an annual scholarship in memory and honor of Dolores Hammond. The name is the Dolores Hammond Memorial Scholarship. The criteria set by the donor is to be awarded to a graduating senior who plans to pursue a degree in education. The amount designated annually will be $500 and the funding source for the scholarship will be annual donations and the money will be held in a designated account by the Town of Wyndham Finance Department. So that's the information and just bringing it forward to the board.
Does anybody have any questions about that? We're going to potentially take action on it, but.
I have one question, which is not specific to this, it relates to it, I mean, I'm certainly in favor of this, but Neil, when we say that this money relocated to the Town of Wyndham, have we moved all the high school scholarships monies to the Town of Wyndham Finance Department?
Yeah, I'm getting confirmation of a yes.
Okay, so we no longer function through the high school bank, doesn't function anymore?
That is correct.
So all goes to them. Okay, thank you.
That was a change that was proposed quite a while back. Yes, by, you know, we were advised that that was not a good practice that was happening before.
Right.
I have a question.
Yes.
When does the student get it, who is honored by this? When they graduate?
I believe it would just be, like when all the other scholarships are awarded, like towards awards night and making sure that it's usable by the time their first semester takes place.
Okay, thanks.
I don't have specific dates or anything like that.
Yeah, I would assume it's functioned like the rest of the high school. So they, the scholarship night, they'll be presented with their check and the committee is a group of teachers and guidance counselors who select the students, correct?
Yes, and actually, our student awards night, I'm being told from the audience, is June 2nd.
And the students, the students have, in many cases, apply for these to be considered.
I believe so. I'm familiar with the dollars for scholars, where you have to actually apply to us and then we make the decision in a blind format of who gets what. But I know the high school was traditionally a committee of the guidance counselors and some staff who, based on the kids, students' interest, assigned the scholarships based upon the criteria of the various scholarships. But they, they actually get the money that night, as I recall. Dollars for scholars money, we actually send it directly to the college, we don't give it to the students any longer. It goes direct to the college.
Any comments, questions? Katina.
Just a point of clarification that there are grants and scholarships that come to the school and are saved at the Town of Finance Department, but dollars for scholars is a separate entity, correct?
Correct, we're a separate private, we're 401, 501(c)(3) organization, so it's tax deductible and, you know, obviously, we're affiliated with the school and the money goes to the Wyndham students and Wyndham graduates. But yes, we're separate.
Anybody have any questions or other discussion about this topic? Okay, so we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is talking about the state partnership plan. And for people who are maybe watching this, state partnership plan is the state health plan that allows municipalities and other, other public entities to join that plan. And we've been discussing this for quite some time, trying to figure out when and if we can transition our employees out of the current plan that they're in and into this plan that offers a lot better benefits and doesn't have the same kinds of deductibles and things like that, that, that the plan that we're in now offers. And so we're going to hear from Neil and Rita on this, I guess?
So I'll just go, just talk to these slides, I can go right to the next slide. So these are just basically the considerations and discussion points, like Lynn just mentioned, this has been a discussion for a while, whether we should do this or not. So I just thought some summary points and just some details to facilitate your discussion on when you're making, deciding to make your decision to vote or not to vote for it. So the considerations are opportunity for better insurance for employees, just additionally, better wellness, like the plan also offers incentives that are just to take care of the overall wellness of the individual employee. So I think there's just overall a better thing for retaining our, or recruiting our employees as well, because it's just overall better insurance plan. One of the other considerations we talked about was costs and moving over from the current self-insured plan, whether we could do it or not. Our current thinking is that, we'll talk about some of the unknown factors in a little bit, but we believe that this is the time to do it. Otherwise, we wouldn't be presenting this to you or having those discussions. And then we're in the process of developing memorandums of agreement, or I don't know if it's memorandums of understanding, I always fall between the MOA, MOU argument there, but with all the bargaining units. And then obviously, in order to make this actually happen, we'd have to get approval from the unions to move forward to the next step, just making sure everyone is aware of that. Step has to occur before we officially do it. Next, thank you. So we are currently drafting a request for proposal in regards to hiring an insurance broker for the medical portion of insurance. This will be reviewed by our legal team and actually, our legal team recommended that we do this. Another just point, like, so it's interesting, we're switching plans, but actually Anthem will continue to be the provider. One of the benefits of that, that people might be worried about is, do I have to change our networks and coverage? That will not be an issue for anybody. So actually, I thought, in my opinion, that's an advantage, being someone that uses the plan, using that provider, I mean. Coverage would start July 1, 2025, that is our goal. One thing that the board should be aware of is if we do decide it requires a three-year commitment, that is a consideration. And then I think there's one more, yeah. So just so everyone knows, one thing to keep in mind, and we've tried to survey, but we'll never fully know, is staff without insurance, our current insurance plan could join our plan and that could shift costs potentially. We've done our best to try to survey and estimate, but that, that is always a potential unknown that, but I actually don't think that, in my opinion, a deterrent, because you'll never actually know that until you do it anyways. So that, you know, I just wanted to make sure I shared that, though.
You also don't know from year to year with new employees who's going to go in and go, there's always fluctuation.
Right. I completely agree with that, I just wanted to make sure that was out there, thank you. And then calculating the blended rate for certified staff, and in the next slide, I'll talk about this. The blended rate basically is, we just got some projection numbers from the state plan, there's a rate for current active certified staff, meaning current certified employees and then retired employees, there's a different rate. So while we got those rates, we, Rita and I, oh, Rita wants to speak to it, all right.
So I talked to Chuck from Brown and Brown regarding the certified staff, because there are a different rate for 65 and under, 65 and older, there's a law on the books that states that we cannot charge retired certified staff more than an active employee. So we have to blend the rates for certified staff and Chuck from Brown and Brown is working on that as we speak.
Does that make sense to folks? Okay. Keep going, Neil.
All right, thank you. So the current budget assumes that we're moving to the state partnership plan budget-wise, and that's assuming a 9% increase from what our insurance was paid for last year, that's already in the current budget thinking and then budget projection, I should say. And then, just so everybody knows, the recent Lockton estimates that were 9-point-something, I don't remember what they were, but they just went up to 11.9. So staying with Lockton actually would cause us to actually have to increase our budget as, because that's not a small increase either, by the way. So I just wanted everyone to know that piece of information. And then I think I had one more slide. Yep, and so this is just, we got this from Chuck from Brown and Brown. And this is just by county, the projected increases across, you could see Wyndham County actually has the smallest increase, it's 6.68 for active. What we don't know yet is factoring in those other two categories. I sent an email to Lynn and Mark, I obviously, when this averages out, it'll be less than the nine we budgeted for, but we don't know, and not knowing who's going to join, but I feel comfortable that it's not going to go up from what we put in the budget. But we're waiting to get that detail, so I don't want to put a, like I could say, make up a, like, number and say it, because we, we're not experts in doing blended calculation, blended rate calculations, although as a math person, I would like to try it. But, but I won't. But anyways, I wanted to make sure I shared that information.
So when we talked about this, and we've been talking about this for a while, we revisited it again in the past couple of months, and we decided to put it into our budget. But we need to take formal action about moving forward or not, correct? And that's why it's on the, it's on the agenda under action items. If we, we were concerned last week when we approved the budget percentage increase, that there might be some new information that came in between last week and now that might require us to put an addendum into our budget book. So I'm just going to open it up to discussion, questions? Mary.
Yeah, I think it's a good time to do this. You know, the cost of prescription medications and care, that they're, they can be very high and burdensome for people who don't have a good insurance plan. I think the idea that some family members would be joining this actually probably means the whole family's going to be healthier. You know, the employees will not have to worry that their spouse is not, is just barely able to afford medicine and possibly putting off necessary care, which will then make a more serious illness occur and make the people have more days that they're taking off from work. I think it could also help with our retention, you know, because it shows our concern and our care for our teachers, our janitors, our staff, or, you know, everybody who can possibly benefit from this. And I do want to just say, I'm sometimes shocked to see what medications that, you know, people in my family have if they didn't have the good insurance plan, that it does take something out of the employee paycheck, but it is well-used, so.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody? Katina?
Yes.
And then Mark.
I'm going to say that, thanks heavens, I am a recipient of the state health insurance through my husband, who worked for the state of Connecticut, and he's fabulous. And it has helped us greatly financially to have that. So I agree that this, that our staff should benefit from the same benefits.
Thank you, Katina. Mark?
Yeah, I would agree that we should continue down the path of getting this approved and starting to talk with the unions. I think, I'm still a little concerned about what the final cost will be. I know the percentage increases are less, that doesn't tell me that the actual cost is going to be less. And as we go through the budget process, we have to be aware that we may make adjustments. But yes, let's continue down the path, let's notify the unions and see if, it's, we don't, we're not committed to actually doing it until we get towards the end, because we don't know what will happen in the next couple of weeks, months.
Lynn?
I, you know, before I call on you, Paula, I just want to follow up on something that Mark asked. Like, at what point are we committing to this, though? Because, like, you know, it seems to me, tonight, Mark, are you, I mean, are you suggesting that we're not, I mean, we know we can't fully commit until the unions all sign off, the bargaining units, because that's in there, but there's a clause in their contracts that left this open. And in fact, AFT, as a union, came out in support of all boards of ed across the state that have their members in them doing this. So I don't think that's going to be so much a problem, but are you concerned about, I'm just trying to get at, like, what else are you concerned about?
Well, my concern is, when we looked at this last year, we realized that moving to the state plan was going to cost us in excess of $100,000 more than what our current plan cost us. And so my concern is, we still haven't told me what my, this plan, you know, I'm looking for what will this plan, percentage increase doesn't tell me what, what you're costing me, because it just tells me what you're going to increase. So that's, that's what I'm worried about is, again, I don't mind committing to it and putting it in the budget, but that, that could mean that if we get reduced at the Board of Finance, we have to cut something else out. So that's my only reservation.
Well, there could be lots of things we have to look at, depending on, you know, where we end up with the Board of Finance and the voters. But do you want to address that?
All I wanted to say was that the budget book is based on current employees on the plan with a 9% increase, state, with the state rates, not the Lockton estimate. So I just wanted to let you know that, Mark, that's what our current budget is based on. So unless a lot of changes happen in the, in the numbers that are on the plan, you know, that would make it, in my opinion, fluctuate a lot.
And what we could do is, what I'm hearing is, because we're talking about the percentage increases, we could talk about value versus what it is this year, what that 9% is in dollar value versus last year, we can make a comparison, I believe, right?
When I did the budget book, I did compare the 9% increase on the state rates and the Lockton estimate at the time was 9.4, I think. I compared the two and going with Lockton would have cost us more. I compared the two, and going with Lockton would have cost us more. So I'm, you know, and I went with your recommendation to put in the budget, going with the state plan at the 9%, like I knew that, at that time.
So you feel that, to the best of our ability, the budget book reflects the cost of doing this?
With the current enrollment, yes.
Yeah, okay. Paula, back to you.
I was only gonna say, and I think you just did, Lynn, that, you know, having worked with just about all of the unions and the contract negotiations, every team that we spoke with were, were very much in favor, if we, in fact, were to make the change. So I don't think we'll get too much, if any, negativity with regard to that. It's also hopeful that with a good program and maybe a lower cost for our employees, that more people will participate in the program. And I would assume that because it's not ours, it's not a history thing that will benefit us, but certainly, hopefully, those folks will be more apt to, to get insurance.
And as was mentioned before, retention, staff.
That as well.
Retention is another driving factor in that, because for people who may wonder what's the, you know, besides the money, what are the advantages? Mary laid out, and Katina laid out some advantages, right? That it focuses on prevention and primary care and reducing co-pays for basic care, or if you have a chronic illness, which many people do, the co-pays for medications and things of that sort are extremely much more affordable than in many other private plans. So if we go into this plan, our employees are pulled in with all the people that are in this plan. So you get much better ability to bargain for costs on behalf of the employees in the plan. So rather than just having, I don't know how many employees we have in the plan now, but it's, it'll be like hundreds of thousands of people in the plan, rather than, how many?
461.
Yeah. And their dependents? Or that's including?
That's just the employees.
Yeah. So, so they're in the advantage of, just think, if you had hundreds of thousands of people bargaining versus 461, you get better prices. So it's a good deal for, for people, even though, and also, one advantage is, it takes us out of the risky business of dealing with our own health plan, which is what we've been dealing with for over a decade now, and there are ups and downs with that, and we wouldn't have to be tied to the town anymore on that either. You wanted to say something, Rita, I think?
We will still have the dental.
Right.
Down there.
Right, but we won't have this big bucket. Right. We'll have more independence. Okay. Any further discussion? Any questions? I mean, I should just also say that a lot of employees have been asking for this, too. Now we're gonna go on to action items. So the first action item on the agenda tonight, I would entertain a motion on the proposal to establish the annual Dolores Hammond Memorial Scholarship.
So moved.
Motion made by Mark, seconded by, was it Paula? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Now I would entertain a motion for approval of submission of the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act grant application. The information on that was in your packets.
So moved.
Motion made by Katina.
Second.
Seconded by Alicia. Any further discussion? I wanna thank the staff that worked on that. All those in favor of approving, please indicate by raising your hands. It's unanimous. Great. I'd entertain a motion on the CSDE Healthy Food Annual Recertification for '25-'26.
So moved.
Yes, Neil?
I just wanna add, in the motion, in the document, there's just a typo, it is meant for the '25-'26 school year, but when you look in the motion language, it mentions the, from '24 to '25, that just, just know that should be '25 to '26.
Thank you.
Okay. Who made the motion? Ilda did? Thank you, Ilda.
You're welcome.
Do I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Brendan.
You're welcome, Eric.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous? Yes?
When I'm flipping my pages here, I see that it's calling for two votes.
Okay.
One was for after-school, I think.
The next vote will be for the food and beverage.
Yeah, I can comment on that, but, thank you, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see it on, I didn't see it separated.
There are two votes.
One's in use the initials the other time. Okay. Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion to vote on the combined food and beverage exemptions outlined in, in our packet.
So moved.
Second.
Paula made the motion, seconded by Brendan. Any further questions, comments? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. I will now entertain a motion to move forward with pursuit of the State Partnership Plan.
So moved.
Who said that one first?
So moved.
Katina.
I think Katina made that motion, seconded by Mark. Any further discussion?
We're all excited about it.
All those in favor, please indicate by raising your hand. It's unanimous. I think we wore everybody down by talking about this for so many years, but wow, that's a big deal.
It's a good move.
And I don't think we need action on any addendum tonight. No, we wanted to have that on the agenda, just in case we did. Okay, so I'll entertain public comment, if anybody has anything they'd like to say during public comment. No? Okay. I will entertain a motion to adjourn at 7:58.
I move, we move.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night, everybody.